Thank you, Mayor. I believe our next item, or I think our last item.
That is item number 22, I think.
Twenty-two, and this is from the plans or impervent to discuss and take appropriate action to establish the process.
And the clerk asked a question earlier, just for the record. I think when I called out the names of the people that voted against dividing the question, I think Mr. Renteria voted no. Doesn't change the vote. Item number 22.
Item 22 is to discuss and take appropriate action to establish the process and procedures for conducting the city council deliberations and subsequent action on the proposed administrative revision to the Land Development Code, commonly referred to as Code Next.
Ms. Kitchen?
I have an amendment to lay out if the council is ready to consider it. This is, should I go ahead and speak to that?
Okay.
This is, I've put it on your desk earlier in the day, so hopefully you have it in front of you. It's item number 22. What this does is it says, "Be it resolved, the city council intends to conduct its initial deliberations on the rewrite of our Land Development Code and zoning map in the manner described in the attached Exhibit A," and then Exhibit A is listed here. This is, this reflects the, this is brought forward with the, with the approach that the mayor and Councilmember Kassar and I brought forward and discussed on Tuesday, and it attempts to, to reflect the conversation that we had on Tuesday and reflect the, some of the, well, not some of, but all of the points that people had discussed on Tuesday. So this was posted on the message board yesterday and sent to everyone last night.
This reflects, this reflects the, the drive to trying to get to eight-three consensus either on specific points or on a range of options.
I can speak to the goals. We talked about this on Tuesday. It's like this, it says item 22 at the top. Okay. So, as you may recall at the work session, we talked about what our goals would be for our process, and so the high points of those is just what I put at the top of this, and that's the goals are that in June, and this just speaks to our process in June. In June, council would take the following action: We would vote on consensus policy direction on the most difficult topics by setting specific guidelines, and by consensus we mean eight-three votes. We would also vote on any consensus code language that we identified, again, eight-three votes. We would, we would adopt the council process for considering Code Next, you know, going forward, and we would set expectations for clear communication and engagement process for the public. So you can see that this, I hope.
Those would be expectations after June.
Yeah, after, yeah. The testing and amendment processes and public input process on mapping would be after June. So, but we would discuss more specifically what we meant by that at the end of June. So if I see some puzzle faces, if I could go over this in more, in more detail, you'll see that this is divided between council work sessions.
I'm sorry, before you do, can we just clarify what the other yellow sheet is? Is this a new version of the staff?
No, that, that, I don't know what the other yellow sheet is.
I think that was what staff presented to us on Tuesday that looked a little bit more like the Planning Commission approach.
Yes, that is the same thing we had it on Tuesday.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out which one we were looking at.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize what you were hanging, holding up. That was, that was what staff had given us on Tuesday.
I think, I think the staff thing was tracking more what the Planning Commission did.
That's right.
And what we were proposing was something that was more driving to, see if we could drive to consensus. We still don't have at this point, though, a list of the policy issues?
No, we don't. What we had talked about doing was posting that on the message board for people to add to, but that's not been posted yet.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
This is just, you know what, I think I may, they may not be all, they all the same page. Anyway, we've got, staff sent us on April 27, the Code Next policy table, which has the information that Greg and Jerry were talking to us about on Tuesday, which are the high-level policy issues that I think, Mayor, you were talking about trying to have some discussion about. So we do have, it's 13 pages on this large sheet, and it came to us April 27 under this cover memo. So I made some copies, but I may not have made copies of all 13 pages, so I don't know what's in there.
Yes, and.
If it's just the first page, at least you can look at it and see, you don't have to look at all 13 pages, but you can see the first page and then familiarize yourself with.
So I think we have staff that's working and trying to come up with, people that are working on kind of the key issue list. So one source of key issues may be that policy table as the list is being pulled together, which I guess we'll, we'll have next week to be able to discuss.
I would like to, I would like to start, at least start with this document that staff pulled together so that, you know, we have a, we don't have to go to the, do the compiling ourselves. It's already been done.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just to be clear for everyone, that's not in front of us tonight. That's more work that needs to be done, as Councilmember Poole has pointed out. That can be used as a starting point, but I'm not asking us to, to, to vote on, on that list of projects tonight. It's not included in the motion.
Right, and I wasn't suggesting that we do. I was simply pointing out that that is work that we may not need to do ourselves because staff had already provided it to us.
Okay.
Mayor Portim.
It's 10 o'clock.
It is now 10 o'clock. Is there a motion to extend past 10? Mr. Flanagan makes the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Renteria? Discussion? Those in favor of going past, I think we're close. I think we should do this, finish this conversation. Those in favor of going past 10, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Poole and Alter voting no, others voting aye, we're going to extend past 10 and finish this. Mayor Portim?
So, I had an opportunity, you know, I wasn't, I was able to attend about half of the discussion. I think we started the actual discussion about this at about 2:30 and concluded about 3:40, and so, you know, I went back and listened to the portion I hadn't heard, and I just have to say, I really, I don't, I'm, because I didn't have an opportunity to ask questions about it, I'm going to have to ask them now. I just don't, it's not at all clear to me how this would unfold as a process, how it would fit into what the staff have described, and I, and I feel like we would really need to get some clarity around those issues before we, before I would feel comfortable voting on this. And I guess I'm just wondering as a global point whether we have the capacity to really work through this this evening, or whether there are some basic decisions we should make before our public hearing on Tuesday. So I just throw that out as a, as a big question, and just again, knowing that I have lots of smaller questions here.
Want to go ahead and ask your questions?
Sure. For starters, you know, I think it's not, it's not at all clear to me what process we would be using to have these conversations, and I think I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to spend a fair amount of time in these deliberation days figuring out what process we want to use to have those conversations. I, it's not, I don't know whether the, well, one, we haven't had a conversation about some key elements in the staff's proposed proposal, like would we, or proposed decision points. Would we start with a staff recommendation or the Planning Commission recommendation? I know this came up the other day, and it was, it was suggested that maybe we wouldn't start with any base motion.
I would be starting with, this vision is starting with a list of key issues.
Okay. So, so we have key issues, and then we're going to try to determine for what there are eight, for what we can get eight people to agree on.
Either specific things or a range.
Or a range, yes. But then, what is the next step? And when does that next step happen? And, you know, we have community members who are, are working through this and trying to understand what's before them, and it's, I don't know how to explain what we would be doing. So say, and the example here is parking. Council directs the city manager to develop code language that fits parking requirements to location, including the possibility of increasing or reduced, increased or reduced parking requirements after considering factors such as sidewalks, transit act. That's a very broad, that would be a very broad, I guess I'll stop and ask Councilmember Kitchen, looks as if she needs to say something, so I'll, I'll just stop there.
Okay, well, no, I certainly appreciate the, the questions. So I'm, I'm just trying to help with some clarity, and again, this is just a proposal. If people want to, to change this, that's what we're talking, talking about, but if you'll look on the, the document under council voting sessions, number one says, "Council will take up topics in priority order." So that's, that's a, a task that the council needs to decide upon those topics and the priority order, and that's what Councilmember Poole was referring to. Number two, council members will make and discuss motions as they currently do. Number three, council will vote on motions continuing to discuss and amend in an attempt for council to reach consensus, and that's the eight-three votes. So, and number four, just gives some illustration, and, you know, it's only supposed to be an example. Please, please don't take either of these examples as a particular motion or as a suggestion of that's what we would vote on. It's only included here to try to show you what we mean by the difference between a policy direction and a potential code language. That's all. So I, I wouldn't want, I hesitated to even put an illustration here because I was concerned that people would think that that meant that was exactly what we would vote on. It's just an example of what someone might choose, one of, one of the council members might choose to bring as, as something to vote on. And you can see the first illustration is just like we always do in terms of, of, of voting on policy direction to staff, and the second example is specific to code language, and that's, all these are supposed to be is examples. So then number five says that we would continue considering motions, just like this, until we finished, until we went through all the topics that we as a council had identified as the, the priority topics in the order that we wanted to identify them in. Then, we would, we would then begin considering motions on other parts of the code, using the same process, and then we could, at the last voting session, we, we could decide to pass a base motion on first reading if we wanted to, and then we would also, at the last voting session, assess our progress and decide on our next steps. And, and I want to emphasize, we have three dates here, June 21st, 26th, and 27th. So anyway, this is, you know, as the mayor discussed, and as we discussed on Tuesday, this, the, the purpose behind this kind of approach is to take the tough, to make some significant progress and to take the tough issues first, and to, to try to reach consensus and bring us closer together as a community and as a council on where we might go on those issues. So that's what this, that's what this process is designed to do.
So, just by way of loss, I, my hope would be that we might be able to get more specific than this statement. If I look at some of the stuff that the Planning Commission did, there were some votes that they took on parking that they were able to talk through various options and get to 12-1 place or a 10-2 place, and I don't remember all the issues, but I think one of the questions was if you have a small mom-and-pop deal, 2,500 square foot in one building, and it was redone, do you, do you, do you, did you have parking requirement for that? Or do you enable that kind of use to be able to not have parking? All the way to a question where if you had an ADU to, to, to a property, what's the additional parking that would be required? And is there a context specific indication for that? But the thought is, is that we might be able to identify some of those issues and lay them out, and collectively talk about them for the first time, because we've never talked about them before, to see whether or not we're able to find a place that, that, that makes sense or a range that makes sense.
So let's stick with parking for just a minute. We have a variety of places in the code where staff have proposed particular parking requirements for particular uses. Are we asking staff if we're going topically rather than by chapter? And I would really have to hear a good rationale for doing that, because both we and the public need a really clear way of, of going through these thousands of pages and, and working our way through them. But if we're choosing it topically and we're talking about parking, I mean, if we ever issued direction, I understand that these are examples about issuing, you know, what the difference is between policy direction and the specific code language. I, I just don't know what the city, what, what our city staff would do if we issued policy direction saying, "Come up with, with parking requirements that vary depending on the use and the context." I'm, I'm guessing they would say, "Well, that's kind of what we did in the code that we've presented you with." And so I think if we want to be more, if.
I agree, which is why I'd be more specific then.
And if we're taking up parking as a topic, like is, are we asking the staff to help us organize and come up with the citations in advance of all the different places where parking appears in the code so that we can review those and come prepared to talk about that? Are they, and so I guess my, let me ask Mr. Rustover, and I guess if, if we issued policy direction of, well, let me, let me leave that. If we take this up topically, do you have the time, once we prepare those 10 to 20 topics and, and vote among ourselves about the priorities, is the staff going to be able to provide us with all the references within the code that are relevant to that topic? Or would it make better sense from the staff's perspective to take it section by section?
I think it'd be tough, you know, to use parking as an example, for us to say all the places where parking is referred to in the code, because there's hundreds of them. My understanding was that if we started discussing it by topic, what we would do as staff would be identify the, the issues, the areas within that topic where there, where discussion is needed, and then when we got further into the discussions with council, we would go looking for those sections of code where we feel that we received direction from council on a certain subtopic within a greater topic to go and look at, do something, doing something different. So, you know, on parking, for instance, to get to this, you know, illustrative motion, which I understand your point, we would have trouble with this because it says go both ways, but if we're discussing parking, and the issue was, say, specifically parking near schools, which we discussed at the AISD subcommittee last week, so if we, if we lay out parking as one of the topics, or the subtopics within parking is parking near schools, and a part of that was a motion to say, "Go back, take a second look at the parking near schools issue," or, you know, consider, I prefer, "Consider increasing the parking near schools," which is what's being asked of us by the district, that we could go do that between first and second reading. Obviously, topic, I think, is an advantage because that's how people think of Code Next is by a topic area, that's where we, how we all discuss it. The advantage of the chapter approach, which is what the Planning Commission is doing right now as we speak, is that you literally go through the entire code and kind of hit everything. There's advantages and disadvantages, I think, to, to both approaches.
Where would you, so I guess in this vision, I guess, I guess what I wonder is, is there a way to use the structure the staff have laid out and make some decisions about where they've indicated that we would need to make a decision, and try to meld this conversation around where we have consensus into it? Because I'm, I'm just not, I'm not sure how this will unfold.
Ms. Kitchen?
You know, it's, I just want to make a suggestion. You know, it's almost 10:15 at night, and if there are, and it sounds like the Mayor Portim has some major questions, I'm not sure how everybody else on the dais feels, but I'm not sure if 10:15 is the appropriate time to be wading through these issues. I just lay that open for people. I do think that, I'm ready to proceed, but others may not be, and I just want to give us the possibility of, of bringing our full thinking to the issue and them asking whether, whether we ought to be talking about this at this time if people are not comfortable. So I'm asking others to weigh in, and I know the Mayor Portim has, has questions, she didn't have the opportunity to be with us when we talked about it at work session. How is everyone else feeling at this point? Is this the appropriate time for us to move forward? Can we talk through it at 10:15 at night? Or we, do we need some more time to, to think about this?
Councilmember Poole?
Yeah, I, I don't think this is a good time for us to take up this really thorny conversation. Every time we try to talk about process on the dais, it really, it takes, takes time. That's why I voted not to continue, and that's the first time I've ever voted not to continue past 10 o'clock. I also have significant questions, because since it was offered on Tuesday, I've been trying to, to walk through the process, and without, with us not working from a base motion to know what the pieces are that rise to the top, and working on the significant issues, I, I don't think the community's going to be able to follow us, and I don't know that we can follow us. So I, I will have significant questions too, and I suggest that we adjourn for the evening, table this, and, and take it up in another setting when we're fresher.
Councilmember Houston, then Councilmember Alter.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Rustover. This will lead up to this conversation. How will the public hearing be handled?
The public hearing will be handled in accordance with the resolution that y'all passed, I think, two meetings ago, so.
It's 10 o'clock at night, Mr. Rustover. I don't remember what we passed two weeks ago.
The public hearing will be, the first one will be Tuesday here in the chambers at 10:00 AM. Each speaker will be allowed to have three minutes, and I believe they can get donation from up to two other speakers for a maximum of nine minutes. There'll be a second public hearing on Saturday, June 2nd, also starting at 10 o'clock, also in the chambers with the same rules, and nobody will be allowed to speak at both public hearings. If you spoke at the first one, you won't be allowed to speak at the second one.
And so when we're listening, we have to, because they're not going to be speaking in topic or subject areas, they're going to be talk, speaking just about whatever their particular issue is. How will we track what they're saying so that we hear what the, the public is saying?
Well, we, the staff will be taking notes, but I don't know a way that we can track it. I think that the idea is for y'all to hear from them and to have that, you know, be a consideration you give when you come, when we come to discussing and voting on the, the item.
So I, I think, colleagues, what, what I'm trying to say is, this is getting very complicated, even trying to come up with a process. So maybe if we had time to kind of think about it for a couple of days, we could come up with something that is not as complicated, where we could get the work done. I don't know how the eight-three vote, Mayor colleagues, I don't know how that, that range that you talked about on Saturday, I don't know how that plays into it, because if we come up with that range and say we, eight of us agree on a range from this to this, at the end of the process, will that range still stay in place? Or do we have an opportunity to revote on it on some topic?
We would have the opportunity to revote on anything.
Okay, so.
It is, it is mostly just, since we've never talked as a council, I don't know how far apart we are, I just don't know how far apart we are.
Okay, so that's just a, a trial balloon to try to see, you know, where, where we are on the spectrum of.
I think in June, I think if we did that in June, and I, and I had hoped that we would have a, a topic list at this point, so we would all have an idea of what we were talking about, and we don't, and we'll try to have that as soon as we can. And if there's a topic list that's been circulated, one version, two version, that people can add to or comment on, some of the people that come on Tuesday or Saturday might look at that list and say, "I'm going to address some of the topics on the list, and I'm going to tell you what I think should, should happen to, to those." I, it was, we were just thinking that, that if we tried to do the Planning Commission deal, try to race through it, everybody's going to get frustrated, and if we took a step back and just did topic, but it'll make a lot more sense, I think, when we actually have a topic list for us all to, to look at, because I don't think that this has sufficient detail to really engage us in a meaningful conversation. But I think we could engage in a meaningful conversation. So, so we'll endeavor, people can endeavor, we'll, we'll try really hard to get a stalking horse list published so that people then have something in front of them that they can, that they can edit. And it's more, it's sort of a different version of a, of a fist-to-five, or whatever that was, to just get a feel for where we differ and where we don't differ. Renteria?
I really support this.
You turn on your microphone.
Yeah, I, I really support this. I think it's, it gives us a base to start with, and I don't have any problem with other members coming in and changing some of this, but we need to start at, at, at one place. So I'm willing to support this.
Okay. But it's been suggested that we don't talk about this now. I think Ann's question was a good one. Do we, do we want to go through it? What we could do is, is we could try to get a list published that people could react to or think about, and then on Tuesday, when we're with the public, we might ask them to speak to that list, and that would give us an opportunity to do that. So when we're together at the public hearing, depending on how many people we have, if we have thousands of people, we may not be able to talk to each other, but certainly at the public hearing, we could in relation to what we want people to, to talk about, so we would be able to do that as well. Mr. Flanagan, then Ms. Kitchen.
So, I'm willing to continue working. We do on a very regular basis, and I, I tend, sorry, I tend to, I come to these meetings expecting that we're going to go late, so I'm always ready to work. If, Mayor, if you're wanting us to just talk about that, I'm happy to stop, but I also can talk about the item, but we might want to resolve the question of whether or not we're continuing.
How do people feel? I could, I could continue, or we could pick this up on Tuesday. I'm, either way. Let's decide that question first. Councilmember Garza, I think, hasn't had a chance to speak, then Councilmember Alter.
I, I think that, I like, what I think was Councilmember Renteria is, this is kind of a big, a place where we start, and we can continue, we can change it as, as, as we move along, but I, I think we need to make some decisions, and I think this is a good place to start.
Okay. Councilmember Alter?
You know, I'm willing to stay and work a little bit more. I don't think we make good decisions after, after 10, but let me start by, first of all, thanking Councilmember Kitchen, Kassar, and the mayor for trying to put forward a positive step and, and having the goal of trying to reach consensus. I think that's really important on this issue. It's always important, but I think from where the community is right now, that's, that's really important. I, I want to just mention a couple things, because I think they're relevant for, for whether we decide to go forward tonight. One is, I don't know that there's any discussion time amongst us listed in our agenda postings for the hearings, and so I'd like to ask the city manager if we can provide an opportunity, should there be a break in the flow of those people coming to speak with us, that we would be able to use some of that time to have some discussion, either on process or if there's a topic that someone proposes to start with, that we could keep going with. I think that would be for both, both days.
We could post that tomorrow.
I'm, I'm concerned, I, I think this might be a place to start the deliberations. I think in the deliberations, it would be really important to get to the point of trying to figure out if we have consensus, and then you could try to build your amendments kind of based on that for the voting, the voting days. And I'm starting to sort of think of a hybrid of that sort, but I don't have that fully, fully in my head. I do want to point out that this schedule, and I know we have people going out of town, but we have a, now we're going to have council work sessions on June 12th and 13th. The 12th, we normally have a work session for our meeting on the 14th. We have the 26th and 27th on this, and we have a council meeting on the 28th. 26th is usually a work session. At the very least, I would ask the city manager not to plan other briefings or other things on those days, if we can at all avoid them. It is going to be a very tall order to work through Code Next and two of jam-packed council meetings, and I, I'm concerned about whether that sets us up for success and, and, you know. know, not knowing how many hours we're supposed to leave open and, and whatnot. I don't know what the option is with people's travel and the fact that we already have the council meetings, but, but I am concerned about that setting us up for success, and I wish I had a solution, but I don't, but, but I do. I'm concerned about that and our ability to get things done through that. I am, I also do think at some point we have to be talking about what, what our options are for base motions, you know, so the community knows how to address us at the hearing, and you know, it could be the staff, it could be the planning commission, it could be a hybrid. We could say we want the staff and we want the planning commission where there was an eight-three, you know, vote to be kind of what we're looking at. I'm not sure what is the best, but I'm, at some point in this process, and it might not be the first day of deliberation that we know that, but we do, we are going to have to commit to a base and deal with one base, because otherwise I don't see how we keep it, keep it straight.
Point of order.
By the way, we can post for Tuesday's meeting, if we post tomorrow to allow us to talk if we choose to, and we'll do that for both Tuesday's meeting and Saturday's meeting, so we have the ability to do that, depending on the number of people show up and the like. Okay? Mr. Flanagan.
So I, I mean, as a point of order, I don't know that we've resolved the first question, and I had not finished my thoughts on the item, and I ceded back to you in order to finish that question, so I could finish my thoughts.
Go ahead and finish your thought.
So you want me to discuss, we've decided that we're going to continue working?
Let's push through just for a second.
Okay, thank you. So I have expressed my concerns about this at work session, but I am willing to, to operate from this premise. I have some questions, some of which I think might be more procedural and legal about what, what it is that we're voting on, what it means to take a vote, and it goes with seven votes. Does it, does it then die? Do we then have to take a reconsideration vote because the thing that went with seven was too specific, and now we want to go back and find something less specific that has eight votes? So I'm a little, it's, it's unclear, although I think we can work through it, how that part would go. I'm unsure what in the goal section, public input process on mapping and engagement process for the public means when we are now wrapping that up with our two public hearings. So we've had like five years of public engagement, five years of public engagement, and so I, I want to make sure that we're actually getting down to the work of interpreting all the input we've received. Certainly, we've all received from our own districts and from here and from two days of public hearing. I want to, and this was said at work session about the staff, this is work session's part two, that we limit staff presentation as much as possible so we can stay focused on our deliberations. I kind of, I'm kind of with the Mayor Protim on, on the topic versus chapter thing. It's not entirely clear to me how one is better than the other, both for clarity and for how we're going to organize or that. So if, if by going with this as a base, and I think acknowledging that on June 5th, we can then amend, well, our first action would be then amending this based on our hearing from the public, which I think is my preference to do tonight, is to start with this as base and then be willing to amend on the 5th. In the interim, maybe getting better clarity about what topic or chapter as an organizing tool might be. I, I also think it's, this document is complete, but its length makes it seem more complicated than it is. It's actually not as complicated as this looks, but it's, I, it, it erred on the side of completeness, which I appreciate, but it's also, I think, not as complicated. So it would be nice if the, if Councilmember Kitchen or any of the other folks who put this together might come up with a couple more straw examples of what these parameter eight-three votes look like. And, and maybe you just pull it right out of a planning commission, but whatever that is, I think that would help both me and maybe the public understand what, what those look like.
I think that's the real hole that we have right now. If we could just get a list like that out, endeavor to do it, recognizing that everybody should cross it up, change it up, I think at a really high level, I think you're right. This is actually pretty simple. What this is saying is, let's assume that collectively, we're really trying to find a place that could pull the community together. Just how do we structure that? So there's nothing about this that's intended to catch anybody, to lock anybody in, but let's just see if we all put our efforts together, if we can find a good place, and, absolutely, we, you know, we could be 10 minutes into this and start changing, but I think it'll be apparent to us. You know, once we sit down and start talking, my sense is it will become apparent to us whether this is a good thing to do or not. Councilwoman Paul.
So on the policy issues, can we agree that we will begin with the list that the staff has put together? Because otherwise, I don't know who's going to put that list together. Is it all of us? Is it one of us? And this seems, since this work has already been done, I think we should at least recognize this work as a starting place.
I'll make sure that that informs, I'll try to put a list up, and anyone else can, but I, I think that's informing the list that we were pulling together.
Absolutely, it does. Okay, thank you. I have two more things. Calendar for June, can I just remind us gently that we will have to set aside sufficient time to discuss the two ballot initiatives? We have the charter review work to go through and determine what we want to have on the ballot, and then we also have our upcoming bonds from the bond task force. We will need to go through those categories and determine the appropriate levels of funding and what, what we want on the ballot, and we will also need to do that, I think, quickly. We won't have time when we come back, I don't think, because of budget in August. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, here's, here's some of my thinking about the continuum piece, Mayor, that you were talking about with the eight-three vote, and, well, it's a range between X and Y. So if we get eight votes of people that say it's this low end here, X, and this high end, Y, but we don't know where the midpoint is, that leaves a lot of, because this is, this is this far apart, okay? And if we say to staff, which was in the posting and the message board, "You guys go back and tell us what you think it should be," or apply this where it is appropriate in the code, well, that's already the code. That's what we have currently. So my question is, when we have the first eight-three, we find eight people like this range from low to high. Are we going to take subsequent votes to try to narrow that down? Because otherwise, that really is not a decision.
I think so. I mean, if we're, if we're constructive and we're finding that we can do this, you know, we get to an eight-to-three place, I think maybe we set it aside for a second, then go on to the next one. And it may be that, that, that we find that, that we can get to pretty close so much of the time that we look at each other and we say, you know, something, we could actually get this done? And then we can go back and revisit those, and maybe there's trade-offs, you know, as we, as we do a document that has compromises, as we're pulling the community together. I don't know, but I don't think we have to prejudge what happens.
Okay. So I want, I want to help kind of shine some light and surface some issues, because, because people are going to try to understand, well, what do we mean by a range and an eight-three vote? So it could be this wide, or it could be this narrow of the range.
Right.
Also, is the eight-three a continuous? All of the votes that would be taken would be eight-three? Are we, and if so, how does that, how would that be policed?
Well, I think, I think, I think it's in the search of eight-three. So it's in the search of eight-three. So we'll introduce a topic and we'll talk about it, and it may be that we look at each other and we say, you know, we're never going to get to eight-three on this one. So we'll put it aside, and then we'll go to, to, to another one. And, and if we find that 99% of the time, that's what we're doing, then this process isn't working. If we find that, that a good portion of the time, we're actually being able to resolve things, then, then that'll be a sign that, that tells us what we should or shouldn't continue to do.
And then how will we know when we have achieved the final vote on any given issue?
My guess is if we get to there, we'll know, right? If we're still making room and it's constructive, then we'll keep talking, and we get to the, we're not going to keep repeating ourselves. So, so if it's something that we're not going to be able to get to, we'll put it aside, we'll go to something else.
Okay. I'll have more questions, but...
And, and I'm sure that as we go through it, we'll, we'll refine it and say, this isn't working, or this aspect of it is working. It's just a place to start, and it's, it's a place to start that says we're going to start this process by trying to find if we can, if we can come together on stuff.
I, I understand. I think we all want to come together at some place. I don't know that, I don't think we have a sense for what that place is at all, and, and we have to construct a process that isn't so loose that, at the end of the day, we're like, well, we're not really sure what we decided or whether we decided anything at all.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree. Mayor Protim.
So I have a couple of specific questions about this, and I want to echo Councilmember Alter's point that I appreciate, too, the framework of trying to find consensus on such a, such a topic that has caused such division. Number three, under council work sessions, council will review and discuss the related policy goals. By that, are you referring to kind of general policy goals as reflected in our general policy, or are you talking about the goals at the top of the sheet, or?
This was an attempt to, to say that for each topic, we would be talking about what we're trying to accomplish. You know, and, and again, this is not hard and fast, but if we're taking up a topic, to my mind, that, that was a way to talk about how, the, the fact that it's clear for the community and for us, if we're clear about what we're trying to accomplish under a particular topic.
Okay. So it's general. I didn't, just because it was capitalized, I didn't know if it was a particular, I did just know if it was a particular thing, or if it's just general policy goal, we're just going to review. We're going to start with a discussion from staff about how the topic aligns with Imagine Austin and other goals, and then later, we're going to come back and talk about that same issue.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted, that was, it was just a simple, just kind of a general question about, I just wasn't sure if we were talking about some specific set of policy goals or just general.
No, no.
Then four and five under that session, we're talking, so we're in the work sessions is when we would be determining how we're going to post amendments. So we would, we would hold off a bit on some of the questions that the staff asked us to think about in terms of timeframe for posting amendments and things of that sort, and we're going to determine that in our work sessions.
I think so. I mean, I think the, the attempt is to see if we can, if we, if we actually need that crutch.
Okay.
Or if we just start talking if, if we find that we don't need that crutch.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to have to continue to think about topic and chapter, and, I mean, as a first pass, I think working through it by topic might be okay, but at some point, we're just going to need to, we're really going to need to hit, hit it chapter by chapter by chapter, and I'm, I mean, I'm going to, even if we move forward doing it by topic, I'm going to reserve the right to really raise an attempt to shift back, because we've got to make sure we're... I'm, I'm also just very concerned about the request here on this list is actually, answers the question that I asked you all before about providing citations. It's, it is assuming the staff would provide us with citations, which they may or may not be able to do, depending on the timeframe, but...
And I don't think it's inconsistent with what's being proposed here, exactly what you just said. I mean, if we go through this and are able to kind of get to general places of agreements from a topic standpoint, then I think it's very likely we could just then just, well, then let's go, let's go through the chapters now, because, because we have enough of a working understanding of what we're going to do in those places that we're otherwise contentious, but we're not deciding it just here, because we know what the overarching agreement is that we had on the dais. So I think it would make us going through the chapters, we would go through chapters much more quickly that way, because we would know the, the general thing that we're applying or the direction that we're applying that we had kind of agreed upon, rather than starting with the chapter, which I think is going to beg perhaps the alternative and the barter, barter questions, and it's just a way to get into it. But I think you're absolutely right. This only works at the end of the day, as we go through the chapters and make sure we're, we're putting the right place.
And so as I, and one of the questions I had coming out of the discussion on Tuesday was whether that eight-three was always going to be our measure.
Until we decide otherwise, and we could decide otherwise on any given question.
But it sounds like the proposal as laid out was not intending that every vote from here on until the finish of Code Next would have to be eight-three to be successful.
Absolutely. In fact...
It is or is not?
Is not.
Okay.
And it doesn't surprise me that at the end of the day, if we get to four questions that have to be decided, or however many questions on something that's other than eight-three, and that's the only thing standing between us and being able to finish Code Next, we, we take some hard votes. So it's not setting a pattern for anything. This is just a way for us to, to see where consenses are, but it's not supposing that. We're not predetermining any of that.
Okay, but the eight-three is just kind of an initial pass.
That's how we're starting.
Okay. Okay, I think that answered, that answers my, the main specific questions I have at the moment. Thanks.
Quite frankly, we just sat down and we said, if everybody entered this in absolute good faith, trying to bring the community together, what would that kind of process look like? And that's what we tried to set up. Maybe it won't work, but let's try. What else? Council, Councilwoman Alter, and then back to Mayor Protim.
So, so again, I appreciate the goal, and I think that, that we need to, to be entering this in good faith and trying to come to consensus where, where we can. I hope that we'll be able to see pretty quickly if it's productive. I have, I have two reservations. One is, we need to make progress this month. We, we can't be spinning wheels. We've been spinning wheels for, for a long time, and I don't know what that looks like once we get going, but I'm willing to get going, moving in this direction to begin with as of now. Two, though, I think this is pretty hard to explain to the community, which is on edge about this process, and so beyond, we're going to see if there's consensus. I, I think it's, it's going to be a challenge to explain to the community what this process means, and, and I think that's, at least for me, that's where my questions are coming from, so that other people have a sense, a sense of what this means. And so I think as we move forward to the 5th, and if we have an opportunity to have discussions on the 29th or the 2nd, I think we need to think about what we're communicating to the community beyond that we're your leaders and, and it's not our turn to look at this, and we're going to start by approaching this in good faith, just do what's best for the community and come to a consensus. People are going to be asking, though, about details of, of the process, and it's going to be a challenge not having, having those answers. And that, this just may be so massive that that's where we need to be at this point, but as we, as we move forward, we're going to have to get more clarity than, than where we are, you know, and where this gets us for starting on the 5th.
Okay. Mayor Protim.
So it's, it's still not clear to me exactly how the topic list is getting drafted. Is this something the staff, I kind of came away from Tuesday's discussion, thinking that the staff were helping draft that topic list of kind of topics that have come up as concerns.
We came out of that meeting, we asked the staff to do it, we asked the consultants to do it. We've all been working on so many things. I really hope we would have one today, and we don't. We may throw something out. If the staff's going to throw something out first, that's fine.
We being the two, the three of you?
Yes, the three of us may throw something out. Any one or two of us may throw something out. The staff may throw something out. We just need to get something out at some point so that people have something they can react to.
And I would just suggest, too, that we, we, you know, we're not, we're not scheduled under this schedule to develop a priority list until the 5th anyway, but we need, we need to use our public hearings as well to help generate and populate that topic list.
I think that'd be great.
Because that's, you know, what we've invited people to do, is to come and talk to us about Code Next, and so that topic list needs to, needs, needs to respond to what, what the public lets us know is our concerns or, or areas where they want us to focus.
And vice versa. If we were able to publish a, a list like that, it might be something that people would look at and say, "I'm going to give you feedback on these kinds of things." Yes, Councilmember Kitchen?
I, I think to, to, to speak to what the Mayor Protim was asking about in terms of a topic list, I think as a, as a next step, we can... of a topic list, I think as a, as a next step, we can use the council message board to talk about, to talk about a list, bearing in mind Councilmember Poole's suggestion that we start with what was sent to us by the staff. So I, I, I commit to, to working with the mayor and Councilmember Kassar to put a list up, and others can add or subtract to that list, and we can start working on the council message board to see if we can craft a list that we're all comfortable with. Does that make sense?
It does. My only caveat would be that when the first list gets published, think of it just as a stalking horse.
Right.
Don't, don't look at the list and say, well, I don't want to do this, because that's not the kind of thing that I would like a list to look at. Look at the list, and if it's not closed, then say what you think the list ought to look like.
Yeah. Or if, or if someone else wants to, to create that stalking horse, that's fine with me. Just, we just need something put up on the message board that says, this is where we're starting, and then people can all contribute.
That'd be great. And we can also talk about it on Tuesday and Saturday. Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Poole.
I would just also suggest that, looking back at some of the work session topics, we'll also highlight some of those issues that, that have continued to be concerns throughout the process.
I think that's true. Councilmember Poole.
Well, I handed out again the proposal on the amendment portal, and I'm proposing this to bring it back. What this would be like is the concept menu that we used for budget, so that it's a little bit easier to use, and staff would have access to the information on it as well. The message board is kind of closed. Only certain people can post to it. But, so this lays out the criteria, the elements that would be in the amendment portal, and to the extent that, do I need to make a motion to adopt this approach? This is to create the public-facing portal that provides the transparency and would allow the community to follow along with us. This would be for posting amendments. And it wouldn't be anything more difficult to create than what we have had in the past three years for our concept menu for budget. Same, the same process.
I'm sorry, what?
Sorry. The, this is not exactly how you could do it, so you can adopt it just like this. You can either use the message board and, and you have the same kind of information, or you could do a Q and A, like you do in the budget process.
We want to do, I do not understand why law is saying that we can't do the same kind of a concept menu for this that we have done for budget. Why is this different?
So the, you can talk to each other about things on the message board?
This is, well, this isn't to talk to anybody. This is to post amendments. Message board, I agree, that conversation, we understand how the message board is being used, but we're not talking about having a discussion. This is to allow the public to see what amendments are going to be submitted.
My recollection of the, the concept menu is, you all talked about it at work session, and then the staff members put things together, and if I have gotten incorrect, I'm sorry.
We submitted items to the concept menu, and the staff did post them, but the items came from the council.
Right. Yes, the items come from the council, and then the staff members put them out there. It's so that we don't have a problem under the Open Meetings Act.
So we don't have...
So I can, I'm happy to look at this and see if we can't tweak it just a little bit so that it fits within the Open Meetings Act?
Well, absolutely. I mean, I brought this on Tuesday. I would have hoped that that, that we would have proceeded on that a little bit more than we have. I didn't just bring this today.
Right. So, so my only issue on this right now is it's hard for me to wrap my head around this?
That's completely fine. I just want to make the point, I brought this previously.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it, and if there are concerns on the staff's side, then they should surface them and explain them and come to me, to tell me. I don't understand what the problem is. This is just like the concept menu for budget.
If you would take a look at that and see how you would implement something like this, that would be helpful. At this point, right off the bat, I don't see us doing amendments, because I don't see us parsing language, at least initially, although I think we're eventually going to have to get there. So I think having staff tell us how we would do this when we get to that stage, whenever it is we get to that stage, I think this would be an important thing for staff to be able to react to, understand the concern. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember how we did the Code Next Q and A. We did submit them, I mean, each of these has a slightly different process, right? We post directly on the message board with the concept menu. We send them to staff, and they compile. With the Q and A, we send them to staff, and we compile. With the Code Next questions, I think we submitted those directly. Is that right?
Yes.
So we had the ability to submit them directly. So I think, I guess my question to you would be, do you want, are you asking staff to create something where we can submit them directly? And then the second part of that is, I think, whatever makes sense, I like the idea of having it be in one contained spot, rather than in the message board, just because it's really challenging to find, I mean, it'll be in amidst all the other message board posts, not that we post excessively, but trying to, trying to come up and find all the different amendments scattered about the message board is challenging, and then we can't do searches and things on them in the way we can do the budget Q and A. So I guess as staff look at this, if there's a way, I have no, I have no opinion about whether or not we should be able to submit it directly or have staff, as long as there's a staff capacity to compile them, but it would be great if it was its own contained spot. I don't know if that's consistent with what you were requesting.
That's exactly what I'm looking for. I agree. The message board is clunky, and there wouldn't be a way to segment off Code Next from anything else. This would have the virtue of clarity, and to the extent that we put the items on to that, into it directly, or if we submit it to staff to do it, they all come from us, just like the budget questions did with our concept menu.
And, and...
Actually, I'm sorry, not budget questions, our budget writers. And it's not a Q and A, which is a difference from, from question and answer.
Would you check and see?
What we would be submitting is not questions and answers.
Would you check and see what we can do legally and practically, and see if there's a way to be able to accomplish that? Councilmember Kitchen?
I, I was just going to endorse the basic, the basic idea that Councilmember Poole is putting forward, which is that we have a structure in a central location, so that this, so that this is clear for the public, that it is submitted by council members. It's essentially the, it's essentially the process we did for the budget. But it's, it's posted in, in one place that's public, so everybody can see what's being proposed. So I, I think, I, I think that's what you're saying, Mayor, you're suggesting that our staff and city attorney figure out how that works. I just wanted to, to thank Councilmember Poole for bringing this forward. I think it's a, a good idea.
All right. We have anything else before we break?
I have a question, yes.
Yes.
Are we saying, we've had a couple of people say that they're interested in moving forward with this as a, as a base. My question is, are we ready to vote? If not, then Councilmember Alter had raised the question, when can we vote? Can we post this to vote on Tuesday if we're not ready today? I just think it's going to be important to vote on this at some point, so there's at least a structure that we agree to start with.
Okay. Let's hold off the vote. Let's post on Tuesday.
Post for a vote on Tuesday?
And also on Saturday.
Okay.
Just to give us a posting allows us to discuss and decide process for moving forward on Code Next.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, what we'll do is we'll use the same posting line from today. We'll edit to Tuesday and Saturday. Those agenda have already been posted, but we'll edit as an addendum.
That'd be great. Thank you. Flanagan.
I would like to ask to have that done on Saturday, and as a way to make sure the public understands, I will not be at the public hearing on Tuesday. I'm leading the city's delegation to the Oslo Freedom Forum. I'll be in Norway. I'm actually cutting my trip short to make it back for the second public hearing, and obviously, the Oslo Freedom Forum was scheduled without consequence to our Code Next process. So I won't be here on Tuesday, but I want to ensure the public, and reassure the public and my colleagues, and you can watch my Instagram for the photos of me listening to the Tuesday public hearing on the flight back from Norway. And I promise the community that I will do that.
Send that photo. Councilmember Alter, then the Mayor Protem.
I don't, I would just ask that we still have an opportunity to discuss things. I cannot understand not voting, but if there is a lull in the time, and we want to have an opportunity to have some discussion on something related to Code Next, it would be good that we don't constrain ourselves from doing that.
And we won't. I hope we can talk the process.
With the understanding that we won't vote on something.
I hope as we can talk the process, as well as the, the, the list of, of policy or questions, so we can advance that ball, too. Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Flanagan's announcement reminded me of something, and that is, you know, back when we were talking about the calendar, Councilmember Alter pointed out it was the end of school, and there would be things that draw us all, and, and that's going to be true for me over the next week. And I have my daughter's awards ceremony on Tuesday around the dinnertime. And so that, that sort of brought me to the question of whether or not we want to schedule and let the public know about when we're going to, what our, what our parameters are for the public session on Tuesday. I would suggest that we set now some expectation, if we're planning on taking a lunch break, which I think we should, if we could name what those, what that start and end time would be. So, so again, the public knows if they're planning on coming down, and they can't get here till after 12, that they don't come until after 1:00. If that's when we're having lunch, and then the same with the dinner break. So if we could schedule.
Let's go ahead and set sometimes right now. What time is your, what time is the presentation on Tuesday?
Having said that, I actually have to double check. I'm not sure. Why don't you start with lunch? I appreciate that.
Well, I was going to suggest that...
And I'll do the same thing, you know, if it doesn't coincide, I'll do the same thing Councilmember Flanagan will do, which is just to catch up with that piece of the public forum on that.
I think because this is just taking public testimony, just talking ourselves, we could just say we're going to take a lunch break from 11:30 to 12:30, and a dinner break from 5:30 to 6:30. Does that work?
I was just, because they were not starting until 10 o'clock, so we could probably go a little bit later.
So, how about, how about 12:30 to 1:30?
Sure. Great.
12:30 to 1:30 for lunch, and 5:30 to 6:30 for dinner?
How about 6:00 to 7:00 for dinner?
Okay. 6:00 to 7:00 for dinner. Councilmember Kitchen.
And I just want to remind everyone that I think we put an end date, an, an end time. I don't remember what it was, but I think we said...
So, so the, the danger in doing that is if we don't continue until that time, I mean, we can't not.
But we already voted on it, I thought.
Well, so we had a situation with the Planning Commission where they had advertised that they would be there till 4:00. Nobody was there, and they, they stayed, and they stayed, and they stayed, and then they left, and then 30 minutes before 4:00, somebody showed up, and that's why they're having to have another public, they had to have a third public hearing.
Have we posted an end time?
So we have to be careful about...
Sure. I just, I just wanted to remind us that we put that in the resolution we passed.
I just want to make sure that it doesn't tie our hands, because if people have, we finished talking...
We got it. We posted it for 10:00 AM.